Good evening and welcome to the June 22, 2023 meeting of the Falmouth Zoning Board of Appeals. First up on our agenda this evening is executive session marked for 6:00 PM. As Chair, I'm going to make a preliminary determination of the need for executive session. So for the record, the Board will be entering into executive session under generalized Chapter 30A, Section 21A3 to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, the matter of... Which one are we? Liberty Green.
Liberty.
So many. Liberty Green and Main Street and Lantern Lane where discussion in open session would have a detrimental impact on the town's litigation position. Do we have a motion to go into executive session for that reason?
So moved.
I'll give that to Jerry and I'll give a second. Thank you. Roll call votes start with you, Jerry.
Jerry Potamus, aye.
Duffy, aye.
Mark.
Mark.
Fineran, aye.
Morse, aye.
Peterson, aye.
Petrucci, aye.
All right, we are in executive session. We will come back out to open session at the conclusion of executive session. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome back to the Zoning Board of Appeals meeting, Falmouth, June 22, 2023. You can see from our agenda that we initially opened at 6 o'clock for the purpose of executive session, reconvening for the purposes of continuations, open meeting and public comment. If I could ask everyone to take a moment, please silence their cell phones. I'll start off by introducing members of the Zoning Board of Appeals, starting at by far right or the audience's left is Jerry Potamus, who's an associate member. Moving to the right is Frank Duffy, who is a full-voting member. Next to him is Mark Fineran, who is a full-voting member. My name is James Morris. I'm a full-voting member currently serving as the Chair. To my left is Suzanne Murphy, who is a full-voting member, and the Clerk. To her left is Scott Peterson, who is our Vice Chairman and a full-voting member. And I'm happy to announce this evening is the first meeting of Tony Petrucci, who is an associate member. So the Zoning Board of Appeals, for the first time in several years, is finally up to full strength with seven members. The Zoning Board of Appeals is charged with applying the state zoning statutes as well as the town zoning by law and reviewing and voting on applications. All decisions are made through the public hearing process. Our goal is to hear testimony from the applicants in the public and to allow for a full and fair discussion of the project prior to rendering a decision. To begin each hearing, the Clerk will read the public announcement for the hearing and read pertinent information from the file. The applicant or the applicant's representatives will then have 15 minutes to make a presentation. Time may be extended by vote of the Board. The Board will then question the applicant. Next, the public will be invited to comment. Public comments should be directed only at the project. Please refrain from making any personal or derogatory statements. An opinion conclude... Excuse me. Testimony conclude an opinion in favor or opposition to ask a specific question about a project. Comments should be limited to two minutes. The Chair will limit discussion in the interest of time if comments become repetitive. All members of the public wishing to speak should wait to be recognized by the Chair, should come to the podium. Please state your name and address for the record. Please speak into the microphone. It does not amplify your voice, but it is provided for the benefit of FCTV viewers. The Board may continue the hearing to a future date and time. Otherwise, when the Board is satisfied that enough information has been presented to make a decision, the hearing will be closed. After a hearing is closed, no more testimony will be taken. The Board will then discuss the proposal amongst themselves, then make a motion to approve or deny the application. The motion will be followed by a summary of key findings and conditions. The affirmative vote of four members or a supermajority is required for the approval of special permits or variances or appeals. A split vote, three to two, is a failure to carry and would result in a denial. Any Zoning Board of Appeals decision may be appealed as provided for in Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 17. First up on the agenda this evening is public comment. This public comment is for anyone wishing to comment on anything that is not currently on the agenda this evening. Does any member of the public wish to make a public comment for anything not currently on the agenda this evening? Seeing none. We're going to take the open meeting items out of order this evening because we can dispose of them fairly quickly, and then we'll get into continuations. First up on open meeting members... Oops, excuse me. Open meeting agenda, we have the minutes of May 4th, May 11th, May 25th, and June 8th. Does every member of the Board had opportunity to review the minutes of those dates?
Yes.
Is there any additions, corrections that need to be made?
No.
There are motion to approve the minutes of May 4th, May 11th, May 25th, and June 8th.
So moved.
Give that to Mr. Fineran. Is that her second?
Second.
Ms. Murphy, any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's a vote. Number two, reviewing the letter to the Select Board reading, re-special Town Council. As the Board is aware, or I believe should be aware at this point, we have a 40B application that's been submitted to the state proposing 300-plus units on Sandwich Road that after a comment period will be filed with the town coming back before us. Given the size and scope and for the reasons outlined in the letter, I would like, or am going to propose and would like permission from the Board to request from the Board of Selectmen that Special Town Council be appointed to assist us with this 40B application. I do this for a variety of reasons outlined in the letter. This is going to be one of the largest 40B proposals I think this town has ever seen. It is by no means a dig at our Town Council, but our Town Council is, I think, very competent. They're also very busy. And I look at this not unlike when you go to the doctor. Most people have a doctor, they have a primary care physician, someone they trust, very capable that we can go to. But when you have a specialty situation, you don't want to necessarily go to your primary care, you go to seek a specialist. So my suggestion is that we request Special Town Council be appointed to assist us, someone who specializes in 40B projects, to guide us through this particular project. Should we have any discussion on this? And I'll... I'm going to start with our former Town Council if he agrees in my assessment about going to the doctor.
That's a good analogy to the situation. I do appreciate your comment about the fact that sometimes a project of this magnitude can overwhelm the Town Council's office. And that's a valid consideration. And there are people out there who specialize in 40Bs, who perhaps if we can find one, who can be of benefit to us, then let's go ahead.
Other discussion? Sorry to bypass you, Mark. I'll start with Jerry and work away.
No, I think it's more administrative. I would think that we could, should CC Town Council, Planning Board, and Town Manager as credit.
Mark?
Just so they'll know what's in front of the Select Board.
Take all the help we can get.
Yeah.
I'm in.
Scott?
Agreed. I think it's a prudent step.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you. Full agreement.
Any other discussion? Is there a motion to send the draft letter to the Select Board requesting Special Town Council?
So moved.
Suzanne, is there a second?
Second.
Go to Scott. Any... All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Letter is drafted, will be sent to the Board of Selectmen.
NCC.
NCC, as requested. Any Board discussion? None. Board updates, as I previously stated, for the first time in over two years, we're finally up to a full complement of members. So thank you and welcome aboard.
Thank you.
We're always a very insightful member of the audience, and we look forward to having you on the Board.
Thank you.
So thank you for applying.
Thank you.
Any future agenda items that we need to discuss or include? None. Seeing none, that will conclude our open meeting agenda items. Next up, we have continuations. First up, we have hearing 61-20M EcoLand Development LLC, Zero Percival Road, Lot 4, T-Ticket, requesting the Board to review revised plans for the comprehensive permit pursuant to remediation assented by the parties during the applicant's appeal. I can speak up, Counsel, if you'd like. Welcome back.
I am awake. Thank you. I was just looking at the papers. Apologies. Thank you. For the record, Peter Freeman, Freeman Law Group in Yarmouthwood, representing the applicant. So just tell you and everybody in the audience where we're at. And I would suggest that because we have our traffic engineer here tonight, Jeffrey Dirk from Vanessen Associates, that we could let him go with your permission first. We had sent in back mid-May, May 16th, I think, several documents prepared by Mr. Dirk affecting or rather relating to and describing and assessing the site distances. Questions had come up on that, as well as traffic volume questions had been raised by Mr. Wall on behalf of his clients. So those submissions were sent in over a month ago. And then the other thing that I'll comment on, there was the peer review letter that was sent on June 8th, which we did go through and review. I apologize that I wasn't able to submit a response letter until today. If we're going to go over that, I have copies to pass out, and I would like to at least comment a little bit after the discussion on traffic. The reason that it didn't come in until today is when we got the letter, I emailed it to our engineer, said, please start working on it and, you know, help with the responses. And last week, we got a response that said, "I've been on vacation for three weeks and oh, by the way, I think I'm retiring." So I apologize. I guess I'll just leave it at that, other than the fact that then I scurried and unfortunately got quite busy. So what I have done is I made copies of it. I know you wouldn't have a chance to go over it. I just emailed it to Noreen today. But... And I don't know if Mr. Cote from Beals and Thomas is here. Certainly, you know, you want to hear from him. And then if I could briefly go over what I prepared and understand that, in our likelihood, you know, you want another hearing. So if that's all okay with you, I would ask that we turn it over to Jeffrey Dirk. Thank you. Noreen, do you have, like we had the last time, the slide set up with the PowerPoint? Or I think you have the drive if you need to put it in.
I won't go near technology, but...
So this is touchscreen, I'm assuming?
And there's a mouse here, too.
Thank you very much.
I apologize for the delay, Mr. Chairman. For the record, my name is Jeffrey Dirk. I'm the managing partner with Vanessen Associates. And as you heard from our attorney and hopefully in your packet, you have a couple of pieces of information from us as it relates to the project. And I apologize for the piecemeal manner in which it came in. Just to describe kind of what our assignment was from the applicant, and I believe this was in response to some questions that the Board or members of the audience may have had. We started off with a site distance assessment for the project, looking at sight lines at Trotting Park Road, as well as coming out of the proposed development on Percival Road. So we submitted initially a letter or memorandum to you that evaluated those parameters. That was then followed by a clarifying memo or letter that really looked more in terms of what we were recommending for specific actions to be undertaken to provide the necessary sight lines at these intersections. And then the final piece of information, aside from this plan here, was to look at the traffic volumes that may be associated with this project. So I'll start with the traffic volumes first because that's probably the easier thing to go through with you. So we've assessed what the amount of traffic or trips that would be produced from a 12-lot subdivision, essentially, or 12 single-family homes at this location. The way that we undertake that assessment is using trip generation data published by the Institute of Transportation Engineers. The Institute of Transportation Engineers collects data, traffic studies essentially, for all kinds of development that's taken place throughout the United States. And they publish that data. It's a scientific study that's done, peer-reviewed, lot of charts and graphs that go into that. But what it does for us as transportation professionals, it allows us to understand if we know the land use that's being constructed and the parameters of that land use. In this instance, it's single-family homes, and we know the number of homes that are proposed. We use that information to be able to estimate the amount of traffic that's being produced. So then we can assess what impacts these developments may have on the town's roadway system. So using that data, a 12-single-family home project during the commuter peak hours, so the highest traffic volume hour when someone's going to work or taking their children to school in the morning, we look at that time period. We also look at an evening time period, so generally when people are coming home from work. And we look at how much traffic is produced during those time periods, because if we take that amount of traffic and then add that on to the roadway during those time periods, it's going to show you what the impact would be at a peak condition. So a 12-lot subdivision, 12 single-family homes during those time periods would produce about 10 trips, most of it going out in the morning, and then in the evening, most of it would be coming back in. That information, I would say that the studies have been published over 50 years' worth of data. It really hasn't changed much. It's generally around a trip per home during the peak hours now. That doesn't mean the traffic doesn't occur outside of those time periods, but what it does mean is that if we are outside of that peak hour, the traffic isn't as high as that number. So the absolute peak would be somewhere around 10 trips produced by this project. So just to put it in context, it's one additional vehicle every six minutes during the peak hour. So that's an extended time period. That would not qualify in terms of either looking at accepted standards for the need to prepare a formal traffic study or Cape Cod Commission standards either. So it doesn't rise to that level. That being said, safety is always an area that needs to be assessed. And that's why our initial undertaking was to look at sight lines at the access into the project site. So in terms of sight lines, as we measure them, there's two types of sight distances that we measure. The first is known as intersection sight distance. So intersection sight distance is the sight distance that if someone is driving along Trotting Pond Road and they're approaching the intersection that we've shown here, it's the distance you'd need to be able to see a two-foot object in the middle of that roadway and then apply your brakes and stop without hitting that object. So that object, you could say it's, you know, the taillight of a vehicle under low-light conditions, or it could be, you know, a rock or something if you wanted to look at that as something's trying to pull out of the sight and it's in the road. The reason for that two-foot object is generally if you have an object that's two feet in height, you need to stop your vehicle or decide, I need to go around it. If it's lower than that, generally you can drive over it. So that's why that two-foot object is set. And that's set by the Federal Highway Administration based on a number of studies that have undertaken. So that's stopping sight distance. So stopping sight distance is along the roadway approaching the intersection. The second sight distance is probably what you're more familiar with, which is intersection sight distance, which is I'm coming out of a driveway or a side street, I look to the left or right, and now I need to see a car that's coming at me, and that car also needs to be able to see me. So what we're looking at there is if I pull out and my car stalls in the middle of the road, can the vehicle approaching me see me? And if I'm exiting, I need to see that car that's approaching me so I can determine if it's safe to make a left or right-hand turn coming out of the project site. So we assess those two sight distance measurements at this intersection. What we found based on our assessment, and probably as you're familiar with the roadway, is that there really isn't a sight distance limitation approaching the intersection along the main road. So the stopping sight distance, looking to that two-foot object. We need to have at least 250 feet of sight distance based on 35 miles an hour, which is generally consistent with not only the... Somewhere in the range of the posted speed limit, but also the speed that people are actually driving, given the curvature in the road here. So the stopping sight distance approaching that intersection for a motorist that's looking for that two-foot object exceeds 250 feet. So that means for us, in terms of that absolute distance for safety at the intersection, it does meet that criteria. So that's stopping sight distance. Intersection sight distance for a vehicle that's exiting the property and looking to the left or right, as you're looking to the left coming out of the property, so again, looking to the left, which would be toward the curvature there, there is a benefit achieved as to that sight distance because the town undertook some improvements to install the sidewalks. So the construction of that sidewalk actually freed up some of the sight lines along in that direction there. So that sight distance looking to the left for someone that's coming out exceeds 250 feet. Looking to the right, what we did notice, and this is... I'll describe it in a minute and actually show you a photo, there's a series of mailboxes that are installed at that location there. What we found is that two to three of those mailboxes that are closest to the roadway actually provide continuous obstruction so that you wouldn't be able to see, given the height that they are at and their positioning along the roadway. So our recommendation is that those mailboxes do need to be adjusted or moved so that they're outside of the sight triangle that you have here. With the relocation of those mailboxes, you have in excess of 400 feet looking to the right coming out of the project site. It's not uncommon that that does occur. Sometimes if you have telephone poles that are in a straight line, sometimes they create a visual obstruction, just given their positioning. The mailboxes in this case do that. And if I can exit out of this, I'll show you a photo of that. So there we go. So we're really talking about the three mailboxes here, so the black, white, and the green from what I can see here. So it's really those mailboxes in that position there. So you can see, this is a good illustration of what you see as you're looking to the right, that those mailboxes, if a vehicle is coming heading southbound along the roadway, you're not going to pick it up until it's basically just beyond where that black mailbox is. So that sight distance is about 100, a little over 100 feet, and we need to have 250 so that the modification of those mailboxes at that location would afford more than 400 feet of sight distance. So that was our recommendation as it relates to the sight lines. So if we go back to the sight distance plan, the last sight distance measurements that we did was looking at coming out of the... Coming out of the development itself, and again, same thing, looking to the left or right or for a vehicle that's approaching the intersection there. Currently, there's... It's heavily vegetated along the property side of the... Where the roadway is located. So we did recommend that there is some vegetation modification that needs to take place. It doesn't mean wholesale clearing, but it does mean that we need to do some selective removal of vegetation within the sight triangle areas. Generally, we suggest to the extent that you're looking at conditions that what you'd want to do is make sure they go out, they trim some of the vegetation, and then they observe the sight lines and see if they actually achieve it. We'd never want to have a situation where you just clear-cut everything. Obviously, that would provide the most optimal sight lines, but also in terms of buffering, of course, you eliminate all of the vegetation, and that's not always necessary. So what we've suggested is selective trimming of vegetation to provide the necessary sight lines. That vegetation clearing, if you look at the plan here, the majority of it's going to happen within the... Actually, all of it, I think, would happen within the property itself. It's our opinion that most of it's going to have to happen anyways just to construct the roadway and get the grading and everything that's needed. But again, our recommendation is selective trimming of vegetation to make sure that we achieve those sight lines. So that concludes the summary of the information that I've provided to the Board in sort of in support of the application. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have now or later on this evening.
Tony, we'll start with you this evening. Any questions?
I have no questions.
Moving the mailboxes would improve the sight lines for the existing residents, I would think also, correct?
Absolutely. Would anyone who's exiting that street, yes.
Okay. No further questions. Thank you.
Where are the mailboxes for this project?
I'd have to refer to the applicant in terms of where that was.
I didn't know if you were going to line up 12 more. I...
Good point.
Just asking.
Are there any mailboxes for the project? Are they going to be internal to the development?
Yeah, they'd be internal to the development.
Internal to the development?
Like one... I'll ask them. That's all I have. Thanks.
Mark?
I noticed on your diagram, you didn't indicate the vegetation to the left, looking down Trotting Park on the curve there.
There's one...
There's one large.
Yeah. One of the things, and this goes back to that utility pole analogy, is that when we're doing those sight lines, the difficult thing I think to remember is that first of all, we, you know, we see... We don't see in a straight line. We look at a straight line, but we have a cone of vision. So you see 20... If you draw a line from the center of your eye directly outside of an object, you can see 20 degrees on either side. So that's kind of your periphery in terms of what you observe. So it's a 20-degree cone on either side of that line. The other thing as it relates to vehicles is that they're moving so that it's not... I hate to say the analogy, someone hiding behind the bush there waiting to jump out. The vehicle's moving along the road. So the combination of the 20-degree cone of vision on either side plus the moving object is that you would see it as it goes, and then the time that it's actually obscured by the bush is like tenths of seconds. So that it doesn't present a continuous obstruction unlike the mailboxes. That's why sometimes you could have a utility pole right up against the intersection and, you know, it may be right there in the center line, but you see around the pole and you can see a moving object.
It's a considerable obstruction. That one large bush.
Certainly has some girth to it in terms of the canopy that's there, yes. Yes.
That's all I have at the moment. It would be nice to see it dealt with somehow or another.
Yeah.
It would certainly improve considerably.
I would say it would be completely clear in terms of the sight line that's there. You're right. There would be nothing within that sight triangle there. I think that's the only thing that is anywhere within the yellow area.
Anything else? Mark, anything else?
No.
Frank?
Well, I'd like to thank Mr. Fineran for bringing that up because I just happened to be out there for another reason, not a site inspection, but going north on Trotting Park Road, you do come up on this intersection pretty quickly. And, you know, I had read your report, and it just didn't kind of register that it was... I think it's that obstruction you're talking about.
Yeah. That's a good size push.
You come up on that intersection pretty darn fast.
It could be something, and I apologize that...
I think somebody ought to take a look at that and see what can be done.
I would... Intersection heads... I would suggest maybe the intersection head warning sign, once, you know, we get the street named and everything like that, might be something.
Now, I have a copy of your plan here. It's kind of small, and it doesn't seem to be a legend here telling me what I'm kind of looking at, but it's... Does it... Are those mailboxes within the layout of Trotting Park Road?
I believe they are.
A portion of them. It wraps the corner.
Well, it looks to me like the ones that you want to move...
Yes, you're correct.
Are within the layout of the road.
Yeah, and I can... So if you look at this line here, which we'll call it a, you know, dot-dot-dash kind of line that you've got there, that's the public right-of-way.
Oh, it is? Okay. So then the mailboxes are...
Correct.
They have to be moved, really. They should be moved.
They need a license for night.
They're not going to get a license.
I don't... I don't give it to them.
The town... Certainly between the town and the postmaster, those can be relocated. Yeah, they're within the town right-of-way, so certainly the town has the direction to do that as long as they meet the postmaster's requirements for service.
Okay, well, that can be dealt with a condition if this is approved.
Yes.
But those are the two things that I have on your issues. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jerry?
No, thank you. No further questions.
Thank you.
So my question's about the location of the mailbox and its properties. It's ought to have been resolved. Is... I realize that this is not entirely within our purview. Is there any other recommendation you would make or things that could be done to improve the overall safety on the stretch of the road if this project went, such as a reduction of the speed limit?
So that's a very difficult thing to achieve. I'm so...
I'm aware of...
Yeah.
You have to go through, but it's... I agree. You come up in this intersection rather quickly.
I mean, you certainly... So you can put in curve warning signs to suggest a... You've seen these, you know, with the yellow signs with the speed on it that suggested... So the combination of the intersection ahead warning sign coupled with a supplemental speed plaque underneath that is something that you might want to consider just to reduce the speed as they're traversing the curve here to do that. Changing the posted speed limit is a... It's a very... The state has made a very difficult hurdle for any community to reduce the speed, other than applying for, and I don't know if the town has done this, I actually should know this, whether you've applied for under its Mass. General Law, I think it's 17C, where the town can say... its Mass General law, I think it's 17C, where the town can say.
25 miles an hour.
If it's not posted, this is what the speed is, on any unposted road within the town. Speed limit reductions are very difficult to achieve.
Now, I know you have to submit the plans, the speed study, and so on.
Yes.
This particular line of sight is based on a 35 mile an hour speed limit?
35 miles an hour, which is right, correct, right. And the, the available speed with the, I'm sorry, the available, the line of sight that's available with the relocation of those mailboxes at over 400 feet, that would be available, that is getting somewhere toward 50 miles an hour, in terms of the speeds. 360 feet is required for 45 miles an hour, and so we would be at a position where you'd be well in excess of, you'd be, you know, over 40 miles an hour with the relocation of that.
Is the posted speed limit currently 30 miles an hour? I can't quite remember. It is 35?
There's no posting, so it's 35.
30, actually.
Yeah, and it's thickly settled. All right.
Thank you. Any other follow-up board questions? Public comment?
You want to do that now, or after we finish?
Why don't you, if why don't you finish, we'll go to public comment. I will extend additional time to DeBotters.
By the way, before moving on to the, the peer review, I have two things to pass The first is apropos to the discussion we just had. Interestingly, Ed pointed out, and I don't know that we filed it, but there is also a town bylaw, in addition to the fact that the mailbox apparently are in the public way, but Chapter 199, Article 2, Obstructions at Intersections, the town select board has the power, based on recommendations of police and engineering department, to have a hearing, notify interested parties, and basically order that an obstruction, both natural and man-made, be removed, for safety reasons. So I don't know if you're aware of that, but I'll, maybe what I'll do is just pass them here, and you can pass them down.
Yep.
Just wanted to have them stamped in.
Yep.
And then on the peer review, again, what I'll do is pass it out, you don't have to necessarily follow along completely, and again, I apologize that you just got it today. But I just wanted to give a few highlights, because we do think that, you know, we either have or can't satisfy the things that have been pointed out, so let me just, again, I'll pass them here, and you can pass them down. So as is typically done with these peer review reports, I inserted my comments, our comments for the applicant, after each of the comments, starting at the numbered items from Mr. Cote. One thing in general I pointed out is that it actually is a subdivision. I'm not sure why that wasn't clear, but that's okay, it is a subdivision. So, starting with the numbered items, which I believe is page six, a lot of the comments, and we take them all seriously, relate to waivers related to certain of the overlay districts, and without reading every word, but the general critique from Mr. Cote is that we seem to be asking for blanket waivers, and I understand that it would be preferable, boards like to see specifics. But my answers, in general, certainly show that what we've asked for, as well as the explanations in my response letter, or responses within his letter, basically do address the specifics. The first one, related to Article 4, Section 240.17, about complying within the, with the, with the use requirements, even though we did ask for it, in reality, there's a separation, dimensional requirements, we are asking for waivers for, but actually, this particular section says, "No building or structure shall be erected, altered, et cetera, except as provided in Articles 5 through 13 District Use Regulations." So actually, even though we do need the dimensional relief, it is a subdivision, single-family houses, and single-family houses are permitted. So we actually don't need that particular waiver. The next section, Article 14, Section 240-66, he again wants specific waiver requests, and, without reading the whole thing, "The erection extension, et cetera, of buildings must meet the minimum requirements in Article 14," and I won't read the rest of it, "no lot reconfigured under," yeah, so this is the one that relates to dimensional, to summarize it more briefly. This is the section that summarizes, that relates to dimensional waivers, and we gave the specifics in the application, I didn't bother to retype them here, but so this waiver is, we believe, appropriate. There are dimensional waivers, certainly. The next one is, again, Schedule A, the dimensional waivers, and again, it is a subdivision, and we've asked for specific waivers that are listed in the application. Then we get to some of the overlay districts, and the Water Resource Protection District, and in general, I just make the comment, I don't think it's relevant to go back to the comments, or the findings in the original decision that denied the project, but more importantly, the requested waiver states, "Applicant believes that no waiver is required, because under 230-72.3A5 of this article, the single-family use is allowed, except for uses prohibited under other sections which don't apply." And development permit permitted in the underlying district, and other activities, might require a special permit, but no special permit sections are required to have waivers under the 40B law, I cited that in the initial request. So our explanation is, which is very specific, "Single-family residential is not prohibited," and, as I just said, waivers are not required for any special permit provisions. So therefore, we believe that we have specifically explained why we think we comply, and the waiver is justified. So it's not really just a blanket waiver. The next one is the wildlife corridor, and in essence, what we really are saying, you know, we're not sure, we don't really think it's applicable, but if it's applicable, we're requesting waivers from the procedural and substantive sections, it's 240-94A2, which says you're supposed to file a corridor plan with a reviewing agency, and the reviewing agency is, of course, you folks, the zoning board. And then, "The zoning board shall review it and approve or modify it as part of its decision." So you still have the power to do whatever would otherwise be done under this section, although we don't think that there needs to be any attention to wildlife. So we say, if applicable, we're saying, Section 240-94A2, a waiver is justified, because you're the one permitting agency. We also have cited, and we included it in the waiver request, the March 4th, 2021 letter from Environmental Consulting and Restoration LLC, which supports the application, because this isn't an environment, an environmentally sensitive area. That letter stated, and I don't think anybody disagrees, "The site is not located within estimated or priority habitats of rare species, according to the Massachusetts Natural Heritage and Endangered Species Office. It does not contain certified or potential vernal pools. The site does not contain USGS map streams. The site is not located within an area mapped as land subject to flooding, and it's not within an area of critical environmental concern." So all those reasons together, whether you just agree that it's not applicable, or that we've satisfied it, and, you know, there's no need to worry about a corridor plan to protect wildlife here, that's why we believe, number one, that we've explained it thoroughly, and number two, that what we've asked for is appropriate. The Coastal Pond Overlay District, in essence, similar type of analysis, we don't believe that the comment is really correct, because we did explain why we believe that we comply with the standards. The sections that are applicable simply require an analysis of development impact, and we believe all the things that we've done, including that letter that was submitted, and comments from staff, or lack of comments from town departments and staff, basically give you enough to consider, and to make any findings, if you think they're appropriate. And we also pointed out in the request that it is in the, there are several different parts of the Coastal Pond Overlay District, and we state that we believe we comply with those standards, in part because the project locus is not a nitrogen-sensitive area, only the northwesterly corner of the locus falls within, excuse me, a Zone C of a state, Zone 2, and none of the septic systems are in the area. So those are some of the, I would say, more important comments in the peer review. Subdivision regulations, I'm not going to go into great detail, we will have somebody, somehow, we can respond. A lot of them, I think, are more sort of informational and things like that. One, whether or not a fire box is required for smaller projects, they're not typically required even by the planning board, but without, you know, going through them, and I haven't added detail, because I'm not an engineer, but in essence, you know, we do believe that we can handle those things and satisfy the peer reviewer and, and the board. There's some of the comments in the section called Decision Comments, that, in essence, we basically say we don't agree with the concerns, some of them related to saving trees and things like that. It is true, there will be trees that are cut, but on a project like this, we're proposing robust landscaping, so we think we satisfy the different concerns that were expressed. And again, there was a comment, which is just really legal, not sure why, why it wasn't an engineering peer review, but about limited dividend status of the applicant, and, you know, he's a limited, the entity that supplied is a limited dividend entity, it's been so found by the subsidizing agency in the project eligibility letter, and that's a conclusive finding under the 40B regulation. So, so that's, you know, a legal point, but since it was mentioned, I responded to it. So I'm not going to go on, because I don't want to take tons of time. Quick example, comments in Parcel A, available for future development, it's not part of the project, it's actually been deeded to the neighbor for some privacy. You talked about the sight distances, but obviously, we've responded to that, we believe thoroughly with, with Mr. Dirk. Let's see. And again, he referred back to the other initial application and decision. We haven't seen town engineering department comments, you know, certainly, they've had an opportunity, and if there are comments and things that we can accommodate, we could deal with that, but I don't believe we've seen anything like that. Septic systems, again, it's not a nitrogen-sensitive area, we believe that the Health Board of Health and the agent are satisfied. We don't see any issues with that. Just looking for some of the quick highlights. Again, the subdivision regulations, I don't comment on the details, most of them are kind of informational, you know, we don't think it's necessary to have granite curbs, things like that, but, you know, again, not being an engineer, I have not given the detailed explanations or responses. But again, we do believe sincerely that we can accommodate those concerns. Again, a lot of them are informational. You know, one thing I'll just point out, that they, there's a comment about the environmental impact report, that is one of the subdivision regulation requirements, and again, for a project of this size, and with all of the information that we've submitted, including the fact that it's not environmentally sensitive area, you know, we don't think that anything specific needs to be done on that. We think you have enough information and the guidance of your town staffs to, you know, to make determinations that are, that are appropriate. Again, comments about snow storage and things like that, we certainly believe we can accommodate it. So that's just the highlights of our response, and, you know, I know you'll take the time to read it more thoroughly, and so that we believe, actually, that it's, you know, it's a pretty good peer review report, that we believe we have answered, and can answer as to some of the more detailed subdivision things. So I think I'll leave it at that for now, and, you know, see if you have questions or anything that you would like us to do in addition to this.
Board questions? Jerry?
None at this time.
Frank?
Mr. Freeman, I'd like to thank you for submitting this response in the format you did, having it on this, in the same document with the peer review, makes it a lot easier to generate. But as you mentioned earlier, this came in at 3 o'clock this afternoon.
Sure.
And I frankly haven't looked at it.
Oh, understood.
And there's a lot here, and I think by the time you come back the next time, we may have a lot more questions.
Sure, understood. And by the way, what my comments are in bold and italicized, essentially, it actually was supposed to be printed in red, I don't know how my printer didn't print in red, but, you know, sorry about that. But I think it's still very clear where they jump.
No, I think it is, it's clear enough.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mark?
No, same as Frank, I mean, we'll have time to go through this and fine-tune it or whatever, but I'm all right for now.
One thing I wanted to have done, when we went out on the site visit, I couldn't get a grip on where the retention basins were. We asked, and he went like that, and then I asked where the turnaround was for the fire department, and he went like that, over there. I would appreciate if they could be staked, so that I could really go out and see where they're actually, like, located.
Ed, if you can do that, that.
Certainly seems fine.
Please, thank you.
You know, I have no problem with that, for sure.
Thank you.
Scott?
And again, hopefully, in the timeframe before we all get back together, there are a lot of these items, I think, to your point, with our peer reviewer engineer and your group, hopefully, we can tick some of these things off, so we really don't have to focus on some of the small, in theoretical terms, some of the small things. So that'd be nice to clean up as much as possible, so we can just focus on what remains.
And that's my hope as well.
I appreciate the, the information also. Thank you.
Tony, any follow-up questions?
Yes, just a quick question, I'm new at this, so give me a little leeway. With regard to this being a formal subdivision or not, this is not being developed under 183A, so these are, these homes not exclusive use areas, just contiguous exclusive use areas?
Yeah, there was comment on that in the peer review letter, when, when, and again, the fact that, you know, it's incorrect doesn't matter, but no, it's not a condominium under 183A, so they're not exclusive use areas, they're just like any fee simple, fee simple, separate, deeded lot, where each owner owns everything on the lot, so, including the septic systems, by the way, they are freestanding, independent, Title V compliant, septic systems.
Thank you.
Any other follow-up questions? Now, I'll open up the public comment.
Thank you.
Thank you, counsel.
Our peer is here.
Our peer is here?
Yes.
Well, Ms. Wallis, let him go first. Now, we'll hear from our peer, unless you'd like to hear from our peer first.
Sorry?
Would you care to hear from our peer comment, from our peer's comments first, or would you care to go? We're already at the podium.
Whatever the board wants to do.
I'd rather hear from our peer.
I don't disagree. Do you mind stepping back? Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Good evening, Matt Cote with Beals &amp; Thomas, professional engineer with Beals &amp; Thomas. We were the peer review engineer on behalf of the board of this project. When we came on board, we were kind of directed that, you know, this was a supplement, you know, in regards to the original denial, that this was like supplemental, supplemental information that was being provided to that original application. So when we referenced, you know, findings and things of the original denial, we thought those would be to the interest of the board, as those, as they were previous concerns, and if those concerns are still not being adhered to or addressed, then we thought that would be relevant information to the board, to kind of address that comment. Relative to it being a subdivision, it just wasn't clear to us that that was the case. Typically, you find like more formal lotting plans, there would have been some more geometry to define the roadway, the, you know, it's stated that, you know, the, so there is no, there's like a single lot that only has 23 feet of the frontage on Trotting Park Road, and then there's additional lots, don't have frontage, only on that single, so if everybody owns their own lot, then who owns the lot that the road is within? Like, and who's going to control that? So it was those kinds of issues that we, that just confused us, as to if this was an actual subdivision or not. So to that end, there was, we also made several comments that the, you know, the typical subdivision rules, regulations, whether it was street trees or lighting and different things, hadn't been addressed. So again, we didn't think that was being submitted as a full subdivision plan. But again, as, as we worked through this with the applicant, we can certainly address those comments, or their responses as it comes in, and now that we further understand that that's the case, we'll move forward from there. But as the applicant stated in their summary, that, you know, we had several questions about the waivers, and, you know, how they were being framed, and, and to the boards, to, you know, to just kind of waive sections in their entirety, is not typically something that we would recommend. So we can, again, with the applicant's responses only being received today, we didn't have the time to adequately go through it either, but we anticipate that now that we have the information, we can move forward. Again, as previously mentioned, we went through several of the findings of the previous decision, again, and a lot of those items still seem to be unclear or not included, as far as like previous concerns have not been addressed in this new submission. So again, we brought those to the board's attention. And then, again, regarding the stormwater, no new stormwater information was provided, we were kind of relied on the original submission, and that original submission was peer reviewed, not by Beals &amp; Thomas, but another firm, and it seemed that, based on the information that we were provided, that, you know, a lot of those, a lot of concerns and design issues with that were addressed at that time. The revised submission does provide for a fewer or less home, you know, four, I think, four less homes, so four less driveways, four less roofs, so less impervious area overall. So the original stormwater information, in theory, could apply, we just noted to the board's attention that, you know, no revised information or calculations were provided, and they're relying on the original submission in that case. But with that, if there's anything else the board would like to know, again, only having received that information today, we haven't adequately gone through it, but we will take that new information and go forward.
Start of the slide, Tony?
I have no questions. Thank you.
Scott?
No questions. Thank you.
Sit down.
So, you're going to submit more paperwork to us?
Well, we'll, we'll respond to the applicant's response.
Okay. Mark?
No, I, no, real comments at the moment. We'll go through this in more detail.
Frank?
Well, I'm glad we clarified that this is a subdivision. After reading your initial report, I got a little confused about what it was myself. But I'd like us to find out this, what has been submitted so far, if they were, if we were the planning board, and we are the planning board under 40B, this is really not suitable to make a determination about subdivision control and subdivision issues. Now, I know that under chapter 40B, the applicant doesn't have to go to the same length of submitting the detailed plan, at least at this stage. But I would, maybe Mr. Freeman can comment. What can we expect in a way of detail from your client on the subdivision issue? Because the subdivision issue should handle stormwater, it should handle utilities, it could handle an awful lot of issues that are being discussed here with no answers.
Excuse me. First of all, thank you, Mr. Cote. We respect and appreciate your thoroughness. And in the comments you just made, it is true, so far, some details have been lacking. And I'm not just talking about that the letter from me didn't come in until today. As to your point, Frank, we can supply more. Again, you heard what I said at the outset about our engineer. I would have expected that he would have been able to supply more information in response to those, you know, valid questions. Again, I say valid questions, I don't think that they're ultimately concerns. I think we can satisfy them, both to your peer reviewer and to you folks. But in essence, I agree with you. And you also stated that they don't have to be to the complete level of detail, as if it were not a 40B. But without being an engineer, you and I are both lawyers, a lot of the things that were commented on in the letter, peer review letter, we can supply the information and beef up the plans as necessary with whichever engineer we're going to be able to use. So, I don't, I don't really have a problem with what you said, and I've done, as you know, many...
I think it would be very helpful. For example, Mrs. Murphy had a problem with the retention basins. Now, you know, they're not shown. And to go out and stake them and just look at them in the woods is kind of a pointless exercise.
Yeah, there was just...
Without having a plan to refer to.
Just so you folks know, which doesn't, you know, really mean I'm saying that we shouldn't have more detailed plans, but there was about a two-page narrative prepared by, by Jack Landers, that did kind of describe his treatment and why he felt that the stormwater, because again, there are, there's diminished impervious area and all of that. So, it was his explanation as to how he thinks it still all works just fine. And as was stated at the peer review the last time, and I wasn't around for that, but actually was satisfied with the stormwater. So, on the one hand, that's the reason that our engineer hadn't done more, because he figured, well, you know, it was fine for 16 units, it's got to be less impactful. Now, on the other hand, just repeating what I said, I respect your question and Mr. Cote's, and we should submit some more detailed plans and satisfy these things. So, I don't have an issue with that.
At the site visit, there was a comment made, I think by Mr. Montero, that there's a 20-foot strip of common area, and that is going to be used in part for runoff and stormwater management. Again, whatever you submit, I think we should have something to show how that's going to happen.
Yep, agreed. Yep, thanks.
In regard to the stormwater drainage, it is on the plans that we submitted to the board for the PDA and the EDA. If you look at the plans that were submitted on pages four, five, and six of the 15, this is the stormwater watch report, which is 216 pages, Along with the, you have your stormwater management report, so we do, we do have that. And you also have your stormwater pollution prevention plan, which is probably about 300 pages. And it refers, if you go to your plans that were submitted with the, with the board, on pages four, five, and six of the, of the engineering plans. And it shows exactly where the stormwater watch and what type of drainage we will be using for the drainage in the roads. Ms. Murphy didn't see where the stormwater watches. I will have that staked up, and that's not a problem. But say we don't have the proper drainage, we do have the reports and all the calculations for your PDA and the EDA. So, and it, right now, with the less house lots there, it exceeds the 100-year stormwatch drainage calculations. So, you do have that. So, that is on your engineering. I'm sure not everyone knows how to read the engineering, but if you go through those pages, it even shows you the type of system we're putting. Then even on the last page, it even gives you the size and the, of the infiltrators and everything else that'll be on the road. And as far as the... And these are, this is your PDA and EDA, which they do a topal of all, all of the land for its undulations, and where the rainoff would be going into the stormage drainage. And this is what I was just saying right here on page number four. As you can see, you do have the stormwater drainage, and it does show right here where the drainage is in the, in the area that'll be left open as open space and heavily wooded. It's in the report. And if you go down to the, the second page, it's a continuation of the drainage. You also have where lot number 10 is. You have the drainage for the stormwatch that is on page number five. Now, number six, at the end where the cul-de-sac is, you have your final drainage area at the end of the cul-de-sac with the T turnaround. And it gives the exact detail of what we'll be putting in there. So, that is on the plans, and it is to the 100-year stormwatch, to what the previous engineer wanted, and it's to the calculations of what the DPW and the town would want, the civil engineers would want for that, for that subdivision. So, that is on, on the plans, and it has been given to you.
Question?
So, Ed, even though you have a reduction in the number of units, you're going to stick with the original stormwater?
Absolutely. It will exceed the capacity, absolutely.
So, the, the, we have the, these, these plans, by the way, they've been distributed to us.
Correct.
I have seen them, and I appreciate your comments on them, Mr. Montero. But as far as a 300-page document, I haven't seen it.
Okay.
Was that, and I'm not asking you to give it to me right now, but was, that submitted originally when you came here the first time?
That, that is correct.
So, it should be part of our record?
It should be part of the record, and, and it wouldn't have to be redone, because we're keeping the same capacity with the reduced amount of houses that, that are in the, on, on the land.
All right. Any follow-up questions?
More procedural question. The engineer is retired.
He's...
Land is in front of, wait a minute, sorry.
He, he's not retired. He, he actually went on vacation. He was in Europe. He didn't get back until June 20th. He's considering that in another six months, he's going to retire. But he's not going to be, he's not going to finish this project if you guys have any questions for him. So, I want to get that, I want to get that straight.
I misunderstood.
Anything else?
Seems like it exceeds now.
The original plan had a street that went through, right?
Um, I'm not following you.
It wasn't dead end.
The original plan always had the T turnaround, and it basically went on the original one. It went between house number 15 and 16, where they had the T turnaround. And then the fire department said they would like to have it at the end of the road, which you have right here. If you look at the, where it says lot number 13, there, that's your T turnaround right there for the fire department.
And that didn't change any stormwater?
No, it didn't, because we still have, if you go to, on the engineering, if you go to the page six, you still have the splash pan for the, where the T turnaround is, which is the, the drainage for the, which was originally, was always there.
Okay.
Except for something between the two houses.
Anything else?
I'm assuming, again, more procedural, that your new engineer, whenever you have him, will consult with our peer review engineer to straighten out some of the...
Well, the way it worked last time was the Green International. We were always talking with them on, on the plans. And basically, they usually had a spreadsheet or whatever. So, if they wanted something calculated to put on the plans, we would just do it and give you revised plans. And that's usually the way it works. You just, you know, you talk and work with the engineer.
The answer is yes.
That's what I thought.
Exactly the same fellow, Jack, but yes, the answer is yes.
Thank you. Oh, up on the left.
I'm all set. Like you say, get these engineers in the same room, and let's carve through some of these smaller items.
Mr. Chairman, thank you for the record. My name is Brian Wall. I'm an attorney with an office in Sandwich. You've heard me say this before, I represent three abutters to this project. Patricia Harris, Dan Coulterry, and Mr. and Mrs. Overholz. They have many concerns, primarily that the first denial issued by this board was based upon 31 paragraphs of findings. And the project that has come back before you, has been reduced by four units, and the road has been tweaked. But it's essentially the same, same project. And many of the reasons that the board articulated for its denial have not, in our view, been addressed. I'm not going to go through all of those, because it's obviously going to be a continued hearing. And with regard to the peer review letter submitted by the applicant, we have not yet seen that. So, we, we would like the opportunity to review that and take a look. And one comment I do have about the peer review response is that the waiver requests have become more clarified over time. The peer review engineer for the town has suggested that there be more detail. I think Attorney Freeman said, in some regard, there's going to be some of that. But also, the board, with all due respect, should remember that there's two parts to the waivers. There's getting all the waivers properly identified, and then the board has to go through a balancing test to determine whether or not the requests for the waivers are, are appropriate, or whether they're outweighed by local concerns. And one of our points is that many of the subdivision waiver requests are safety-based. And so, we would respectfully submit that to the extent that there are safety concerns and hazards being presented by the request, that local needs and concerns are not outweighed in that regard. And I'm going to talk about that in just a minute. And just by way of coming at track, Mr. Chairman, I don't think I'll be more than five or 10 minutes tonight just to let everyone know. I have a couple of random points that I just want to quickly make, because there's a lot of information here, and it moves fast from hearing to hearing. And they're in random order. So, the first is, I was looking very carefully at the site plans that have been submitted and have been shown to you. And I note that the surveyor on the plan is an individual named Richard Hood, who has stamped the plan. But the very first note on the plan says, quote, "The perimeter was established by an on-the-ground survey performed by Stephen Doyle, PLS." So, the way that I read that, and I can be corrected if I'm wrong, is that the stamp on the plan is not actually certifying the property boundaries. It sounds like there's a new surveyor involved, and we, I don't know if you know this or not, but Mr. Doyle has passed away. So, it's, it sounds like to me, there's a, just a stamp on the plan. And there's a concern, because the town engineer the last time pointed out that there's a property line on this plan that is different than one of the plans recorded at the registry of deeds. And at the last hearing, you received a letter from an abutter who talked about having her property surveyed by Homes of McGrath, and that she said there was a discrepancy between the bounds that were on her property and the bounds being claimed by the developer. So, with regard to this point, I just would respectfully call that out and submit to you that maybe this plan isn't quite ready for review. Secondly, with regard to accuracy of information, the plan also lists the owner as Carl Gonzo's. And back in March of this year, Mr. Gonzo's actually sold the property to Mr. Montero's company. And so, that plan, it's a technicality, but that's not correct. But that segues to the next point. Mr. Montero's pro forma, where he's showing you his figures for the development, it lists the land acquisition cost at $200,000, but the deed was for 50. And so, I would respectfully submit that his costs have gone down quite a bit, and his pro forma probably needs to be revised. Again, under random headings, at the site visit, Mr. Montero was asked where the drainage infrastructure was going to be. And he said two different things. He said, "The abutters are going to be provided a 20-foot common area buffer zone that's going to be heavily wooded, so that it would screen the houses that are being proposed to be built." But he's also put two 67.5-foot subterranean drainage structures in the 20-foot buffer zone. I'm not an engineer, but I talked to one, and what I, I was told was that in order to install this type of infrastructure, all the trees need to be removed from that area. The infrastructure's buried in the ground, and then it's backfilled and graded. But you can't have any trees growing on that, or you can't have anything with a deep root system because of the subterranean drainage structure. So, I would submit that there's a contradiction that's being presented to the board about a vegetated buffer zone versus where the drainage is proposed. They just, it can't, it can't be both. So, moving back to the road issue, I know this is a new project, I'm not going to go over deep background, but if you, if you do remember, when the project was first submitted to the board, the proposed means of access was each house had a driveway out to Percival Road. And Percival Road has two means of access, Trotting Park and Sandwich Road. When the project eligibility letter was requested by the developer, that's the access that was proposed to mass housing. And mass housing approved the project for eligibility based on that. And in the letter of eligibility, it says, "The roadway is appropriately designed to meet vehicular needs of the proposed development." But the mass housing letter goes on to say that the town is allowed to comment at that early stage about its different concerns. And the town submitted a comment that said they were concerned, mind you, remember, there were two means of access proposed. The town wanted a third. The town wanted the developer to explore having access over Harness Drive, so that there be access for emergency vehicles. And we all know what happened, was the developer didn't have rights to Percival Road. So, now, they lost Sandwich Road as a means of access, and they, they never got the Harness Road means of access. And what they did was they drew this internal road on their property. And when that was reviewed by the planning board, which deals with subdivision review, the planning board had concerns and recommended that the board deny the project. The town engineer had concerns and recommended that the project not be approved. The peer review engineer had concerns and said that there were waiver requests that the board needed to take a close look at. And ultimately, the board did not approve. Now, we're back in the point I made a minute ago. There are four fewer houses, and there is a change in the location of where the intersection meets from the, the Development Road to Percival Road. And I'm not a traffic engineer, I don't pretend to be one. But I would respectfully submit that this is just tweaked. It's not really a different project. And the waiver requests tell you that. And so, the waiver requests that are before you are, for the road, waiver of the length of a dead-end street. Regulations require no more than 500 feet. This road is over 1,000. This road is over 1,000. There's the waiver of the cul-de-sac, and instead, there's this T turnaround that's being proposed. And the last time, the board had concerns with that remaining clear because, I think it was Bob Duggan who said, where are people going to park in this particular development? And how are you going to keep that turnaround clear? And the response was a sign. And I, and I think the board found that we're not satisfied with that. They were concerned about the turnaround remaining clear. There's a waiver request under chapter 305, 5.2.4, and I quote, "For not providing an intersection radius of 25 feet at the entryway to the development road." That same request is being made. And so that's to my point that, yes, they have moved the intersection down a little bit, but it still does not comply with subdivision regulations as evidenced by the waiver request. And the board found last time that that presented a safety concern, and that was one of your findings for denying the project the last time around. And my final point about the road has to do with the sight lines. And again, I'm not a traffic engineer, I'm not going to dispute anything that the representative from Van Ass said. But what I am going to say is that if you read the report very closely, it's very clear that the sight lines are not compliant currently, but require intervention in order to be made that way. And I think one of the problems that they have, and I don't know chapter 199, I'm going to have to look that up, but the obstructions are not on land controlled by the developer. And so because we're not engineers, I had my clients go out and just do a common sense look. And if I can run. I don't know how to start the slideshow, but I can, I can just do it.
Bottom of the bar, see the little movie screen?
The what?
Two over, that one, one, go up a little more.
Get that.
Let's get that.
Thank you. Oh, thank you very much. So this is an aerial, the blue boxes tell us, you know, what we're looking at. This is where the intersection is. As Mr. Duffy said, someone driving along, it does come up rather quick. So what my clients did was they went out at various points in the road, and then they took pictures. And what they did was, if you look at this picture really closely, they held up a sign, an object, so that you could see what they were looking at. And it's right here, this, Mr. Colturi has a red sweatshirt on, and he held up a stop sign. So that's at 100 feet. This is at 200. You can't even see him. And at 300, you can't because there's a hill right here, and there's a tree, and there are lots of vegetation in this particular area. So again, I think you can hear about sight distances and sight lines, but physical things really matter. And in this particular instance, there are obstructions. And that's to the south. Here's a little closer. You can see where, that's at 100 feet. This is at 200. He's right here. You can hardly see him. And then at 300, you can't see him at all. On the other end, going north, we agree the post, post mailboxes are a problem. Also, I noted that the picture shown in the prior report was in the winter when the foliage was down. Here's a picture with the foliage out, and it's very difficult, you know, to see. Here's at 100 feet, you can see the stop sign being held. 200 feet, you can't see it. And clearly, at 300, you can't see it. This is the internal road, which we also think there's going to be issues with regard to that. In particular, I urge the board to look at the plan very closely. You can see this yellow cable stay. That's attached to the telephone pole. And according to the plan, the telephone pole is off the developer's property, so he wouldn't be able to alter any area over there. And I believe that part of this tree, at least part, excuse me, part of it is off the property. This is an excerpt from the developer's traffic report. It says, you know, what I said already, and he said it in his presentation, "There needs to be selective trimming of trees and relocation of mailboxes in order to make the sight distances work." And it's listed here in his report. And the problem being, this is just from the town's website, it's not site-specific. But the issue with the sight lines and all those pictures that I just showed you is the developer doesn't own any of that land. And so it's not in his control, I suggest, to be able to remove anything, and certainly not to be able to maintain it going forward. Here's the plan, too, that shows the property lines. And the mailboxes are all on this person's property, I believe. I know Mr. Duffy was talking about the road layout. May, maybe some, maybe the road layout goes through part of it. But they're clearly not within the control of the developer. And the same goes for all this area over here. That's, that's my report, my presentation. I do want to say one other thing. When I was poring over the developer's information, one of the things that the traffic engineer said about the clearing out on Trotting Park, if I read it correctly, was some of that is going to take place when the sidewalks are put in. But in the waiver requests, there's a request for a waiver of the requirement to put the sidewalks in. So again, I think the board is getting conflicting information. And what I would suggest, as I did the last time, is I would suggest that you have, request the planning board to review and comment on this, request your town engineer. And the Cape Cod Commission does have an expert traffic engineer. And I mentioned this the last time, that as, all the towns on the Cape pay a fee every year to the Cape Cod Commission. And one of the things the Cape Cod Commission does is reviews projects like Walmarts and BJ's and things like that. But they also provide consulting to the towns at bare-bones prices. And so I would suggest that you have the ability to ask for an independent review. And I think one of the things that underscores that is, if I read the peer review's review report correctly, they're not reviewing traffic issues. So that's why I think you might want to avail yourself to the Cape Cod Commission. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Other public comment? More of any follow-up questions or discussion?
I think we need a continuation with more information from both sides, either our side or their side.
Mr. Chairman?
Sir, counsel.
Wouldn't be lengthy, but I think Mr. Dirk can say a few words, and we can also follow up. You know, this is the first we've heard, Mr. Mr. Wall's report. Again, I think a lot of it has been addressed already in terms of where the mailboxes are and the bylaw that I passed out and the control that can be exercised. But Jeff, if you want to say anything.
Good, again, for the record, Mr. Chairman, Jeffrey Dirk with Van Ass and Associates. And I appreciate the effort that the neighbors went through to put together that information. And clearly, you heard from the part of my presentation, it is a highly technical methodology that's used on this. So, but I do appreciate that they went out and took the photographs. And clearly, you know, that, that's what's out there. As I talked about, there's specific heights that we use for measurements and how all of that's done. And I think they did a good job of showing what's out there. We use the scientific method, measurements that are required in terms of measure the height above the pavement, to the driver's eye, to the two-foot object and things like that. So what I've submitted to you is a professional engineer, signed, and signed by me, represents the measurements per mass DOT and ASHTO standards. So I'd leave it at that, Mr. Chairman. So thank you.
Thank you.
I ask a follow-up question.
Go right ahead, Jerry.
What is your opinion of not being able to see the stop sign from 100 feet away, or more than 100 feet away?
It has to do with that moving object issue. Again, what I was mentioning is that it's not that the car is hiding behind the bush waiting for someone to come out, and then it's jumping out at you, that that car is moving at 35 miles an hour or more going around the corner there. So the fact that for a tenth of a second, since you don't, may not see the vehicle at that distance, doesn't mean that you don't see it as it's progressing along that roadway for, in excess of the 250 feet. That's, so the 250 is the minimum that's required. So what I would suggest is that, yes, if you're behind the bush with a stop sign, you can't see it. But that, that's not what, a car is not sitting there waiting to jump at you. And so you need to take into account the moving object as well. But it doesn't discount the fact that there's a bush there. So I don't want that to get lost in this either.
It's not just the bush, it's the tree. So you get your, I mean, they are definitely an obstruction. And wouldn't you, in your professional opinion, wouldn't the best thing that could happen there is for those shrubs to be removed?
I would never say that clear sight lines aren't the best solution, even, even considering a moving object behind those. But that's right. If you can clear the sight lines practically, if that can be done, then, then absolutely, that that's the best outcome for any, any type of a sight distance issue. The longer that you can provide of sight distance, the better.
Questions, go ahead.
Can I ask Eddie?
Go right ahead.
Have you made any contact with, I can't think of the name of the house now, Manuel's house?
John Santos?
No, no. The old house that I used to own there, that Manuel's kid owns now, I guess. I can't remember the last, it begins with S.
Salzman.
Salzman. Have you spoken with them in regard to perhaps moving the shrubs?
This is where the town came in last April, and they straightened out the sidewalk so the road had less curvature in it. This land right in here, if you remember, there was a fence there that everybody was complaining about. That was on town property. So as you're looking down this area right here, that is town property. That is not Manuel Gonzales' daughter's property right there. So that's why when, when the fence was moved, it was because it was on town property. And--
So is that bush, in your opinion, within the town's layout?
Yes.
Okay.
And--
Makes it easier, doesn't it?
And as far as the engineering plans goes, he keeps talking about a surveyor. What you have to realize is, the civil engineer does all of the, the roads, the drainage. And as far as the surveyor is, yes, we did have Stephen Doyle. But what you have to realize is, when a surveyor originally looks at the plan, he's not going to put his stamp on a plan just because it was originally stamped by a surveyor previously. They have to go out and do an instrument survey and certify what was there before the engineer can actually do the design for the roads and for the houses and everything else. So that engineer, Richard Hood, just didn't put his stamp on the plan to say that, yeah, everything's okay. They had to go out there and do an instrument survey on the property all over again. And that confirms, and he talks about the, the telephone pole being in the way. Well, the road, if you go to the engineering, from where the entry of the road is, it's 60 feet away from where the telephone pole is. So when the, when you're coming out, when you're coming out onto the, the road, right here, where, there is a stop sign right there. And that road from this point right here to right there is 60 feet. So when you're coming into the, exiting off of the private road, you have 60 feet looking to your right if there's any cars coming. And obviously, you have the sight distance going out onto Trotting Park Road.
One minor issue. I think only a registered surveyor can certify distances on a plot plan, although the engineer may stamp it. I think there are limitations, and I'm just asking you to look into it.
That's correct. In the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, a professional civil engineer cannot stamp survey drawings. It's one of the, one of the few states that does not allow that to take place. We, we can use the drawings a surveyor prepares. We can reference bearings and distances, but we cannot perform surveying. It's a separate license.
Are there specific issues the board wants to make sure that we get additional information on that have not been discussed or covered tonight? Maureen?
Well, I think one of the items we need to determine is exactly whose property those obstructions are on, right? So that it can be some management plan going forward. If it's on town property, obviously, the town will have the option to do something about that. And that could be part of the discussion. Whereas if it's on private, there's a separate issue there.
Are there issues for the board or from Maureen that we need to make sure we get some additional or supplemental information on?
I think that reviewing the comments from, to the original peer review may raise some questions right now, but I don't have any more right now.
Yeah. We just have homework. A lot of homework, a lot of homework. So we are looking at a continuation. Do we have a date?
When do we think we can get all this information? They don't have an engineer yet.
Jack apparently is available, so--
Oh, I'm sorry. Keep on me speaking.
He was kidding about retiring.
We're hard on retirement.
Our next meeting is July 20th.
Does that give you a sufficient amount of time to get the requested information?
That is enough time, but unfortunately, I have another hearing that night.
Want to suggest another date, Maureen?
The week before, we think would be sufficient as well for the engineers to talk, July 13.
Not here that week. You're welcome to proceed with the meeting anyway.
Would the board like, do you want to go further out or stay on 7/13?
I think we'd like to go further out. I'm not sure. I guess we're allowed to have a meeting without the administrator, but I'm not sure if it's good practice.
Good practice.
Well, we are, but--
Or you could do July 27th, which would be the, well, week after.
I'm sorry, which day did you say?
She just said 27.
I'm available for that.
I'd like to make sure we have enough information to have a legitimate meeting.
Yes.
So let's not just rush this on.
I don't have a problem with that. I mean, essentially, about a month. So, you know, I'd rather, I agree, during one of the safety side, so we can continue.
Getting a nod from the abutters council, make sure that's a good day for them. So is there a motion to continue this to July 27?
Motion to continue to July 27?
For those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? That's a vote. See everyone back on the 27th. Thank you. Again, submissions, the earlier the better for the board, if you'd like them to be properly considered. So, thank you.
So is engineering, tell us if that tree's--
Yeah, somebody will help us.
Why don't we take a five-minute break, allow people to stretch and tend to personal business. We'll reconvene at 8:00 PM.
And maybe put the conditioner on for the-- And maybe put the air conditioner on for the intro.
I think we're.
Formalized by an amendment to the applicant's lease on agreement with Bogosian Development LLC, which happens to not only own 159 Main Street, but also owns 23 Town Hall Square, which is the timber restaurant and axe-throwing and bowling emporium. And we've arranged to add the option of Blue Moon to use their dumpster, which would mean that it would be emptied more frequently. But we don't see any problem that would be caused by bringing the trash down at the end of the day, not past any residents, to that trash enclosure. That's not to say that we agree that we don't have the right to and the ability to have trash collected as it has been for decades from the rear of the buildings on Main Street. But if, as neighbors have claimed, there's a problem with that, and as you know, we have an agreement from both owners, one offering to grant a license, that's DeBon, which is La Civetta, in their right of way, another agreement to grant a license from McDonald, who owns the other property. But if we didn't have the right or chose not to pick up the trash as it has been from the rear, we have a very good alternative to that. Questions have been raised about the fire safety issue, and there has been submitted in the last week a letter from Boyd de Mello, the fire prevention officer of the town, saying that the fire department has no objection to the proposed deck. They would not use the alley or way that exists today to access the rear because it's just not wide enough. So the planning board has fully reviewed the proposal and issued a favorable site plan review decision. The planning board even issued a special permit itself to allow for the lot coverage to be increased over 70 percent to 73.8 percent to allow for the larger deck. We've submitted a plan that if that's the plan that the Board of Appeals approves with the smaller deck, we wouldn't need the special permit from the planning board because we'd be compliant with all the dimensional requirements of the zoning bylaw. And the select board last year approved the sewer connection, and if the select board was concerned about the impact of this restaurant on downtown, presumably would not have agreed that it was a proper candidate for the flow, the sewer flow that was requested. The historical commission, as you know, has issued its certificate of appropriateness for the project. The Chamber of Commerce has sent its in favor of your granting this special permit. I have and can show you, if you wish to see, if you think the public would like to see, the renderings of the reduced deck. I have both surveyor's plan and the floor plan by the architect. We have a rendering of that reduced deck. I think maybe I should pull that one up where you, just because I don't think you've seen These things are only as good as the people who are to do it there. This is the Celine's rendering of the smaller deck. You see it doesn't extend to her back of the building. And this is the plan, the surveyor's plan, that shows the deck only extending to here. This is the architect's rendering of that reduced deck, and this is the rendering of the, that you've already seen, of the full deck. The only difference in this is that very slight variances in dimensions that were noted as far as the length and width of the deck have been corrected, if you will, on this plan. Keep in mind that, as I explained in correspondence, the property line follows the wall, but it is not exact, and the goal is to simply fill the space that's available. There might or might not be the tiniest encroachment on the town property because the wall is not a plain surface, and we would get a license from the select board for that, or we'd end up with gaps. We could do that. I'd be happy to answer the questions that you have.
Start with you, Jerry. Any questions?
Not at this time.
Thank you. Frank?
No, I don't have any questions at this time. I think it should have been covered.
Thank you. Mark?
No, I don't have any questions. I do have a comment that the sewer has nothing to do with parking. The selection granting you a flow-neutral bylaw has absolutely nothing to do with the amount of available parking. That's all.
Suzanne?
Nothing.
Have no questions?
I've not been a part of this, so no questions.
Thank you, Attorney Ament. Attorney Downey?
What I would like to just add that I think that when you're ready to close the hearing, well, I hope you won't close the hearing until you've discussed the case, so that if any issues come up, if there are conditions that would be a concern, that we might have an opportunity to comment on them, but that's up to the board.
Thank you.
Good evening. I think, is it Madam Chair tonight or for this? Oh.
Ah, we're all one team.
Chair and board and administrator. Thank you for continuing this. I didn't have time just getting Attorney Ament's new project information just a week ago, but I have memorialized what I expect to be my script tonight, and I would like to provide it to the board.
Thank you.
And to the administrator. It's in memory and informed, if that is acceptable, and I did provide it to Attorney Ament tonight as well. So I'm looking for, we refer to the assessor's map, and I do have a copy of the assessor's map here. Is this everything?
Yeah.
So. Let's try this one, I guess. Oh, assessor sheet magnified, yes. If you would like to see the entire sheet, I do have a copy of that, but you can see above. Is everyone okay if I just use this one? I'm delighted that I actually got to it.
Doing great.
Okay. Thanks, Richie. So I would like to just begin tonight with, this is not just a parking waiver. This is a special permit for a 100 percent parking waiver, and the abutters are at best dismayed by the actions of the zoning board members last year, last time that we were here on May 11th regarding the reversal of the vote to close the meeting on May 11th after eight months, and that's actually a mistake. It's been, oh, it's been 10 months. I believe that that water hearing before I was involved was last August. And, but anyway, the hearing was closed, as you all know. I really want this on record tonight, that deliberations ensued, a straw vote was taken, and when it became clear that the special permit would not be approved, the same board members who moved to close the hearing reversed their action, reopened the hearing in order to give the applicants more time and potentially to prejudice the abutters. Such a procedure is grossly unfair, overtly partial to the applicants, and is not how the zoning board of appeal is chartered to conduct business under the Massachusetts state laws, zoning hearing, meetings, voting, or the bylaws. The zoning board administrator properly counseled the board members in the moment not to reopen the hearing, the hearing after having closed and taken an equivalent vote. It is clear that certain members of the board are not only in favor of the proposal, which is their right and duty to vote in accordance with their conscience and understanding of the bylaws. Our concern now is whether some board members are acting as agents to the applicants to ensure approval of this permit. We submit that the town not give favor to certain applicants. The board's actions create an inappropriate and undue pressure on certain individuals, board members, to change their vote, despite, I said eight months, but it's 10 months, of various testimony, considerations. Indeed, the applicant's attorney addresses that single member and her expressed reservations in their latest proposal, offering two plans for her consideration. Their original proposal of the last now nine months, 10 months, and the brand-new plan with drawings for a reduced deck. If neither plan sways this one particular board member, does the hearing stay open for the applicant to get another bite out of the apple? We do not believe that this is fair. Please note that the applicant's original plan stated eight employees per shift for 130 restaurant and bar seat operation. When my clients and others challenged that number as inadequate and unrealistic, their concerns were mocked and dismissed. Now the applicants have agreements for up to 18 parking spaces for their employees per shift. La Civetta similarly situated nearby that restaurant is smaller than Blue Moon by one-third. I didn't know of the new numbers, plus an additional arrangement with St. Barnabas. These are arrangements. These are not licenses. La Civetta typically employs 24 to over 30 employees on a busy weekend shift. This is not just waitstaff. This is everyone in that organization. We submit eight was a deliberate misrepresentation, and the current numbers are inadequate at best. As one board member mentioned, there will be long waiting times with so few staff. Putting aside now the legality of arbitrarily blocking the 100-year-old way, my client's opposition to this unprecedented total parking waiver remains the same. By shutting off their own vehicular access from Main Street and their own parking and the parking of others in that block, that they have licenses that are not really licenses, they have handshakes. The site becomes inadequate and unsuitable for its proposed purpose in three crucial performance standards under the zoning bylaws: fire, safety, trash removal, and deliveries. To go to fire and safety, it was news to me tonight that we have another, a letter, because prior to tonight, we had no letter. What we had was a review of only, well, I'll get into it. We have had no general evaluation of the critical fire and safety issues created for the site. It's locking the existing way on Main Street. The fire department was asked only if an increase in lot coverage from 3.5 percent over the 70 percent maximum concerned them, and that is what is on record in this case with the planning board, with the assessor's office, and with the zoning board of appeals. Not an analysis of fire and safety. An informal phone call is what we were told happened last week, last time we were here by the applicant's attorney, to discuss the turning radius of a fire truck with whomever might answer the fire department telephone call. It's self-serving, it's inadequate, and it's impartial, and it's an impartial professional assessment. When fires occurred over the last six months in the Huen's Block and Estia, informally, firefighters witnessed both ways blocked off and told one of my clients it would be easy to get a truck down Huen's Way. And certainly, egress for people would be safer without one of the ways blocked. At last month's meeting, the board member Potamus suggested that fire, the fire and safety issue had been resolved because someone had said that the fire department could just run a hose down from Town Hall Square. But the someone who said that was the applicant's attorney at the planning board hearing in January, not an official from the fire department. In any case, getting a ladder truck to turn a tight corner is only one aspect of fire and safety. Can an ambulance turn that corner right now? Yes. Can a police car turn that corner right now? Yes. Can a truck or a fire chief's SUV turn the corner now? Yes, absolutely. Most critically, can a resident or an employee use the present Huen's Way to escape a fire or other emergency? There have been two serious recent fires in the locus, and the board testimony from two different residents and one business owner that Huen's Way was essential for their escape through the back. The performance standards required for a significant site alteration is that the alteration improve the site for fire and safety and service, 240, 13.1B2A. Presently, the site has two means of egress and ingress for fire and safety services, and the proposed project will reduce it to one. Common sense tells you that the site will not be improved for fire, safety, and service with this project, but it is degraded. This is your mandate as a board to ensure safety and service. Please follow your mandate. In the event the Huen's Way is blocked, the proposed restaurant and their immediate neighbors will have no access to the back of their building for trash removal, despite the applicant's dangling of future licenses to agree to some future time on some future terms with DeBon. That DeBon reference will never be a recordable license, which is what is required. That has been written by Attorney Ed Kirk, that that will never be a recorded license. The McDonald family, who owns a portion of the Huen's Block now, has given basically a handshake. He doesn't want to give up his parking for his tenants, but they refer to it as a license in their most recent communications with this board. Quite simply, no truck will fit on the seven-and-a-half-foot way partially owned by my client. It's a 14, a 15-foot, but seven-and-a-half owned by my client, and McDonald owns his seven-and-a-half. It will be a trespass over my client's property, and nothing will fit in that seven-and-a-half-foot way that McDonald owns. So the applicant's trash removal plan is their alternative to roll the trash down the sidewalk of Town Hall Square to another site to throw away their seafood refuse. I do note that there's no recycling or composting plan for this restaurant. The performance requirements for a significant site alteration is that the alteration improvement for the site, is that the alteration improved the site for the trash removal, and that's the 40B13, 1B2D reference.
Attorney Downey, just fairness to Attorney Ament, you're at the same amount of time right now. Could you, how much more time would you?
I think I have two minutes.
Is the board okay with another two minutes?
No.
At best. At best. You can see, I'm on number 11.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. The performance requirements for the significant trash removal, the deliveries, both the new and the revised plan continue to show a landing in the back of the building with double doors opening into a storage room inside that opens into the kitchen, pretty typical for a practical, busy restaurant, except that Blue Moon will have no vehicular access to this landing, and they're promising the town, that their neighbors, that they have no intention to use that landing at any time over the next 20 years. The bylaw requires off-street loading for every building that receives or loads materials precisely to avoid interference with public ways. 240141H includes backing trucks onto Main Street. Practically speaking, this project presents a clear danger that has already been shown to create accidents on Main Street. Should the board grant this 100 percent parking waiver, kindly include a prescription from parking vehicles in the back of the building or along the extinguished way. A deckless restaurant is really what makes sense here, and keeping the way open and shared as it has been for over 100 years is the best resolution. There are several options for ramp access which the applicants can construct and include in the incorporation of the two other storefronts for which they own as an alternative access arrangement. I also attached, I hope you brought the attachments, the mortgage information that shows that it is a flood zone, that this, the rear of this building and this building is mortgaged with a flood zone. We were told that there was no such thing, and then also that there's no such thing as Huen's Way. We did show you William Huen, William Huen's Way. It's a land court plan, and then if you look at this, this goes back, the assessor's goes back to 1947. I just want to thank you very much for your continued attention to this matter, and I do hope that you will not approve this project as it is. That certainly we want a wonderful success for their restaurant, but not as they have presented it, even as late as tonight's presentation.
Thank you. Hold on one second. Any questions, Jerry? Start with you.
No questions. I disagree with a portion of it, but I think it's administrative, and the TV recording will show what I actually said.
Thank you. Frank?
I don't have a question for Attorney Downey, but perhaps one that could be answered by Attorney Ament. Attorney Downey has made some representations that you don't have adequate access for deliveries. Can you comment on that?
Okay. Well, I guess let's get through Attorney Downey, then we can come back to that, if that's okay. Mark?
I'm good for a moment.
Suzanne?
I'm also good.
I'm good.
Okay. So we're all set with you? Thank you very much.
Thank you. I have so many more things now that this is working I could show you.
And don't forget, I mean, the board has a lot of, you know, items that we've had to review. It does take time, so we appreciate your patience also.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Attorney Ament. If you could respond to Mr. Duffy's question, then we'll have a quick public comment and board discussion.
We submitted long ago, it's sometimes hard to remember, how, all of the things we've submitted. We submitted a letter from Gordon Food Services, I think is the name of the company, that will do the restaurant deliveries. They deliver to three other restaurants downtown. Their deliveries are before eight o'clock in the morning. They would deliver to this restaurant before eight in the morning, and just because it's the most westerly of them, they say they would deliver to it first. They would park either on Main Street, where there are no cars parked at that hour, or they would park in Town Hall Square, where there are also a few, if any, cars parked. There are a number of restaurants on Main Street that have no delivery except off of Main Street, and most of the restaurants, in fact, none of the restaurants, not a single one, has a loading zone that actually complies with the zoning bylaw. But we think that the deliveries will be done to this restaurant the same as they're done to other restaurants on Main Street, and I think that the fact that it's on Town Hall Square gives a little bit more flexibility in how that's done.
Thank you.
I have some other comments I'd like to make in rebuttal to some things that...
If you could quickly.
Okay. First of all, using the plan that's here and here, this is an old assessor's map. It shows the way in question here. Notice, it doesn't show the continuation of the way across this property. It also shows a way that is the way that's next to La Civetta. That is the way that on a, on a, one plan is labeled William Huen's. There is no plan. There is no plan that identifies the way on 159 Main Street as Huen's Way, and the repeated representations to that effect is really inappropriate. The references to easement rights, as you know, from the Assistant Town Council's memo to the planning board that was also submitted to the, to the board, and from the case law that I presented, the issues of easements are inappropriate before the zoning board of appeals. It is not for the zoning board of appeals to determine easement rights. It is not for the board of appeals to determine that the license agreements that have been offered or are signed by abutters with the intention of effectuating them if the restaurant goes forward. It's not for the board of appeals to decide whether those efficient, or whether they need to be recorded, or any of those issues. If the abutters, if Attorney Downey's clients, have a right to use the way that they claim, their remedy is to go to court and so establish it and get the court to enjoin us from building that deck. It's straightforward and simple, but the court cases also say that those issues cannot be decided by the zoning board of appeals, and that even the discussion of those issues is prejudicial. So it's really troubling to me that despite our submitting the case law, which has not been contradicted, indeed, it's what the Assistant Town Council has, has said, that these issues, these claims keep getting made over and over again, and it's prejudicial.
Thank you. Public comment?
One more thing. I did want to, I know that Boyd de Mello submitted this to the Board of Appeals, I believe, last week, and I understood, I may be wrong, but from Ashley de Mello that it was forwarded to Attorney Downey. But the letter says, "The fire department has no opposition to the proposed outside deck. As we stated to the planning board..." This was not my statement to the planning board. This was the town planner's statement to the planning board after talking to Boyd de Mello. "As we stated to the planning board previously, the area to be covered by the deck would not be accessible to fire apparatus. The size of our vehicles and the width of the current alley make it impossible to drive down, much less make the corner around the rear of the building." But whatever discussion there is about use of that way, and whether it's safe or not, that way...
that way is not going to be available in the future. When Bogosian renovated that building, at this point maybe two years ago, and closed, the way was closed off for about four months, he should have left it closed. He didn't. We haven't wanted to close it until we needed to for construction. It will be closed. And if that's wrong, if we don't have a right to do that, the remedy is for those claiming rights in that way to go to court and get a, get a determination of that. We've submitted all the title information months and months ago about this. There is no deed to access, no right at all, and a claim of a prescriptive easement is not an effective claim until it's been proved. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any public comment? Seeing done, how would the board like to proceed?
Discussion.
Thank you. Jerry?
Uh, no, I'm satisfied that all the, all the questions I had would appear to other board members have, have been addressed.
Okay.
And possibly even satisfied.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Duffy?
Well, this has been one of the longest hearings that, that we've had, probably the longest one that we've had since I've been here, and I've been here since last October. But I'd just like to make a response to Attorney Downey's, Downey's comment about the proceedings of the last hearing, where she alluded to the fact that perhaps some members of this board are acting as in an agency relationship with the applicant, and I, I reject that thought. The members of this board are here to listen to the evidence and try and make a decision on the basis of the zoning bylaw, and nobody's acting on behalf of the applicant or anybody else. We had an unfortunate situation the last time where the chairman recused himself at the last minute. The job of becoming the chair descended upon the vice chair who didn't know that the chairman was going to recuse himself, and as a result, I didn't have the time to perhaps think about the procedure to follow. So while it was perhaps unusual, I think it's acceptable, and it does not indicate that there's any prejudice going on here at all. But I look at this case solely as a request to waive the parking requirements of the zoning bylaw by special permit, and I follow the advice of Town Council that the ZBA has no authority to make a determination about the existence of the right of way, who has the right to use it, who has the right to close it. It's simply not relevant to our discussion. We've had a lot of discussion, or a lot of comment from the public and others about this right of way, and it's very clear that if there is a, a right being infringed here, we're typically, in our decisions, we provide that a decision of the Board of Appeals does not authorize any party to violate the rights of others, which means that you have a right to go to court, to seek an injunction, to stop the construction if you feel it's violating your rights, and that is the proper forum, and it should be done in that respect. So I'm not personally concerned with the, the right of way, although I do understand the concern that the people who live out back have about it. It's, it's a valid concern, but I don't think it's necessarily a legal one. I think also it's the board of the, job of the Board of Appeals to advance the objects of the, of the zoning bylaw, and if we look at section 24014.1B1, that's a long thing to say, it provides it in a B1 district on Main Street, it's unique. There are many public parking spaces available, and businesses, business is the paramount use on Main Street. There are residences which are allowed, but they're not really the paramount use. The Class 1 restaurant is allowed by right. Other restaurants operate on Main Street without dedicated parking, and this one I see, as presented in this application, is really no different. Now, 24014.1B1A, I guess, waves parking for the proposed restaurant and the existing building of less than 60% lot coverage. The special permit, in my mind, comes with respect to the extra seating which is set forth in, on, on the deck that's been proposed. Now, this member, this application went before the planning board before it came here, where it got two favorable votes. The planning board did vote at one point to increase the lot coverage resulting from the construction of the deck to 73.8%, which according to Mr. Amet's alternative as proposed tonight will be reduced under 70%, so that perhaps the special permit is not necessary, but we don't really have to worry too much about that. But the planning board also decided that they would vote in favor of the parking reduction even though they didn't have the authority to do so. One thing about this, this application that struck me is the analysis of the parking situation as provided by the McMahon engineers. They suggest that the existing parking is sufficient. Now, we all know that there is general overall at certain times difficulty in finding a parking space in Town Hall Square and in other parts of the town of Falmouth, downtown. But the thing that struck me is that if you look at these, the additional parking that will be required by this deck, it really doesn't amount to much of anything. The McMahon estimated that if there was 56 seats on the deck, which I think has been reduced now to 44, that the deck would generate eight to 10 parks per hour at peak hour, and that's really just not much. It just doesn't seem to, to justify all of the, the concern that we have about, about the parking. The, and the inside seats can be built with no consideration for parking whatsoever. When you're looking at the parking requirements or the parking waiver, you have to look at the whole town. The fact that you can't find a parking space in Town Hall Square doesn't mean you can't find one behind Eastman's, doesn't mean you can't find one at Vineyard Sound, or Vineyard Savings Bank, doesn't mean you can't find something on the street or next to the library. There are a lot of options, and people have to hoof at a few blocks to get to this restaurant if that's what they really want to do, but I would put them, put them to that task. So I, and I'm also very impressed by the fact that they have gotten, taken this seriously. They've got an arrangement with St. Barnabas Church for 10 spaces. They've got an arrangement with the Historical Society for eight. So I'm inclined to grant the relief requested based upon the alternative of 118 seats and 44 on the deck.
Thank you. Mark?
Um, I'll save it for discussion after we close the hearing.
Okay. Suzanne?
Um, I agree with Frank on something, although I thought Mr. Amant said that the outdoor, they were going to reduce seats in the inside, not on the deck. That's what I interpreted.
No, the total gets reduced. The total gets reduced.
So both inside and outside being reduced?
No, they didn't add the seats, they subtracted to the inside of the building.
Let Mr. Amant respond if it's a factual issue.
If you want to clarify, how many seats that the applicant is currently asking for in total, please?
I'd like to show you the floor plan.
I guess structurally, is it 118? Is it 130? That's basically the question, which is...
This chart, this chart on the plan which says occupant counts, shows the number of proposed seats, which matches the drawing of tables and seats, and it also shows the number of seats that would be allowed in the space. And what it shows is that inside, if you count the three, the two dining areas and the bar, you could have 88 seats. We've only proposed, and always have proposed, only 74 because 88 would feel, could feel crowded. That's not changing. We're not, we're not increasing from 74 to go up, taking seats off the deck. The deck could have, uh...
Attorney Amet, what's the ask? Is it 130, 18?
We're taking 12 seats off of the deck, and we are not putting them back inside. So the total number is being reduced from 130 to 118.
Thank you. Perfect. Thank you very much.
And I'd point out that since you could have 88 inside, and the total in the restaurant is now going to be 118, that's an increase of 30. You could have 88 inside by right, no special permit, no parking requirements, no need to do anything with employee parking. But we're having a deck, it could mean at least 30 more, we're adding 44. We're providing 18 spaces now.
Understood.
If you had a 30 increased seating on, even if you provided all the parking that the bylaw requires, that's one space for every two seats, that'd be 15 more parking spaces. We're providing 18.
Thank you. Suzanne?
I'm also.
Uh, you know, Mr. Duffy went through a, a long list of which, most of which I agree with. I mean, the difficulty here, I think we, we have been here a long time. We've had heard a lot of items that, that do go into the decision-making process, so, you know, I apologize to everybody that this has taken maybe a little bit longer. We all, I, I can only speak for myself, the parking has become a problem. The assessment, I think, has to be borne by the town so that we can really have an independent review of that. That's unfortunately going to take time, and that's not what we're going to try and do here this evening, because we've been here, quite honestly, in my opinion, long enough, so I'd hopefully like to ask the board if we could move forward with a vote, quite honestly, is where I'd like to go and close the hearing. But again, that's up to the board on next steps, so how would the board like to proceed?
Motion to close with discussion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Yeah, second.
So, Mark motion to close, second by Mr. Duffy.
Yeah.
Hearing is now closed. Additional discussion? Jerry?
I'm satisfied. I think Frank summarized a lot of things that I actually forgot about, but I agree with.
Mr. Duffy, any additional comments?
No, I made my comments. I'm satisfied with what I represented to the board.
Mark?
Um, my position really hasn't changed.
Okay.
Um, the policy, or whatever the town had for, was made when we had unlimited parking. That's absolutely not the case anymore. You know, this has been reduced now to 118 seats, so that's 59 parking spaces. Anybody know how many parking spaces in Town Hall Square? 65. We've got another restaurant there, and we have Town Hall that does business at night. I mean, I share due to my experience, when they went and got their flow-neutral bylaw last August, I could not find a place to park. I realize it's only for a few short months in the summertime when this is a problem, but around here, that's when everybody's going to make their money. The Transportation Committee brought this forward after over a year of, of work, and they were ignored, to the point where they all quit. Mr. Suso, as much as I had little regard for his managerial skills, he tried to deal with this. I mean, he, he wanted to rent the lot behind Cappy's and have a shuttle bus, and it, it didn't go anywhere. I mean, he did acquire the spaces behind the bank, but nobody knows where the hell they are. Honestly, I mean, you could, nobody knows where they are, and it's, it's just, at some point, this problem has to be dealt with. I mean, nobody could deny that there's a parking problem here. Mr. Amant admitted that there was a parking problem here, but he said he was happy for it. Of course, he has his own parking space, so, you know, he, he should be happy. I, I, we cannot deny them their restaurant, and I don't want to deny, and believe me, I grew up in this business. I know what it's like, but, I mean, we have to consider everyone. And I, like I said, this came up in 2020 and 2021, and it was never dealt with. The problem's only gotten worse, and adding another, whatever it is, 59 spaces, I mean, we're not denying them the right to have a restaurant, it's my right. I mean, they're just asking for extra, and in my mind, there is no extra.
Okay.
And I guess I really don't have, oh, I will say, that that parking study was an insult to our intelligence.
Agreed.
Um, eight to 10 spaces.
Six to eight parks.
Six to eight parks. I mean, that's absolutely ridiculous, but it goes to show you, you can, you can buy anything. I'm sorry, I don't want to make enemies out of anyone, but we have a serious problem here, and we're not dealing it, dealing with it. We're just kicking the can down the road, just like the Board of Selectmen did. Right? I mean, General Flanagan was on that Transportation Committee, I mean, it's, I mean, this is the problem, and granting this isn't going to alleviate any of it. That's absolutely for certain. Frank said a couple of weeks ago, "Well, if you don't find a parking space, just keep on driving." What about on a Thursday night when I come here? Shall I keep on driving?
Uh, no, you have to show up early. Okay, thank you. Suzanne?
Um, I agree with Mark. I was going to bring up that study too. The, this board asked the applicant for a traffic study, and we were denied. Oh, yeah, Scott asked. And we were given this McMahon study from February of 2021, where the guy was in Boston online doing his study. He, we asked him, "Did you walk? Did you walk the property?" "No." And I just don't see, I appreciate that they did go out and get spots to help the employees. It's not going to help with anybody else but some of the employees, but I don't see how it's going to be enforced. I don't, I can't even imagine how they're going to enforce it. If my daughter comes down here to go to work at 4:30 and it's pouring rain, she's going to pull in over here and park, and nobody's going to know it's her car. How are they going to know if she was a waitress at this restaurant? And as far as, like, I wouldn't want my child or human relative walking to the Lawrence School in the dark at midnight to go get their car, and I, I just don't see how the parking part's going to be enforced for the employees part of it.
Can I just add one more thing?
Go for it.
I, as I said, I, we owned hotels and restaurants growing up. I'd worked at this business for a great deal of my life. When I was a bartender at a bar, well, a couple of bars, in the Falmouth Mall, I mean, after 9:30, 10 o'clock at night, I would, I would walk waitresses out to their car, and, and that was only out in the parking lot. I, I honestly don't see, and I mean, most of these employees are running from one job to the next. They have no extra time. They work in the daytime, they work in, or a lot of them. They're not going to park.
Yeah.
Blocks and blocks away.
No.
And I wouldn't want my child walking to the back of the Conan Museum or wherever it is, or even to St. Barnacles.
Thank you. How would the board like to proceed?
I'd like to have some more discussion. I don't know if I can change anybody's mind, but I think the McMahon assessment was done by professionals. I think there was some confusion versus a parking capacity and the actual parking ability. I don't know what the parking capacity would have got us. I tried looking it up. I don't think, I think we asked for it, but I don't think we had any aggressive discussion on what does a parking capacity give us. As to the employee parking, they went overboard to provide opportunity for the employees. We don't enforce anything, and I think, I, I think enforceability, if we so inclined, we could put some requirements in about that, but, I mean, I, I just don't see those two things as rising to a denial. I guess I disagree with a lot... I guess I disagree with a lot of the other issue raised by the other member, but, you know, I think yours are the most easily addressable by me. I don't know if they carry any weight for you.
No, we were all, I think, generally speaking, were hoping for a more robust parking study that was specific to Town Hall, but under the time constraints, I don't think the applicant could get to that kind of detailed assessment, so it was a theoretical, and that was Florida.
But the Board of, the Planning Board had said they were going to put that on their agenda to discuss that, so I think it just backs it up that that issue is beyond us, and the Planning Board is going to continue to address it, and we don't have any requirement to stop approving anybody that requires parking.
Lorraine, anything that you'd like to add?
So, just a couple of minor notes for the Board. So, in the updated seating plan that we received, I did make a note on page seven of your draft. We were looking at the seat count, and while the architect did recognize 118 proposed seats, and that's what the plan showed, they also referenced that there were a total of 139, I mistyped as 137, seats allowed. And per the Building Commissioner and the Fire Inspector, they recommended that the parking waiver be based on the number of total allowed seats, as shown on the plan, versus the total number that they're showing you that they plan to provide. So I guess for the Board, you know, first of all, I would, you know, correct that reference, and then it would be a matter of...
What's that number?
Whether you want to either limit them to the 118 seats that they're showing you as being provided, but we typically reference plans that are submitted as part of our approvals. And this plan, while it tells you there's 118 seats, they're also telling you that they could have a total of 139.
The number of seats allowed, as the fire department and the Building Commissioner referred to, is what is allowed under the zoning bylaw, but what is actually allowed is what we vote. So we really don't have to concern ourselves with what the bylaw allows if we limit it in our decision.
I would agree, other than, like I say, you reference plans as part of your approval.
He made the representation here tonight orally, told everybody what he would agree to.
Right.
So we're at 118?
Yes.
So I guess I'll say it again.
One of the things about the, you know, the parking situation is not static. It's dynamic. People come, they go, they arrive, they leave. The way I read the McMahon report, it said eight or 10 cars, and that is per hour. That's not all night, that's per hour. We know there are going to be more cars than that, but if you look at the whole parking situation, that's a very, very small percentage of the whole parking situation. As I said, it's a dynamic situation. People are coming and going, parking spaces get taken, they get, they get, they get filled up. Now, I didn't mean that if you're driving around, you can't find a parking space, you just keep driving and don't stop till you get to Mashpee. That's not what I meant. What I meant is you, if this, this will, in a sense, resolve itself. If there's no parking available, people are going to stop coming. I hope that doesn't happen, but that's a risk that developers will take.
That's kind of like, nobody goes there anymore, it's too crowded.
Well, there's some truth to that.
Too much of a good thing. Okay, so, again, it's after nine. How would the Board like to proceed?
Finish this.
Yeah, I think we're, I'll make a motion to approve the parking reduction.
Motion approved, named by Jerry. Is there a second?
But he specified that the parking reduction is based upon total, 118 total seats we're waiting for on the deck.
Based on 118, so Frank is at, you're a second?
Yes.
Put it to a board vote.
Jerry Patamis, aye?
Duffy, aye.
No.
Nope.
Aye. So we have three to two, so that will not carry, and the application is denied for the additional seats?
For the parking.
For the parking.
Parking.
Okay. Well, that closes the hearing. Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you all.
Now, maybe the town's going to take this problem seriously?
Maybe.
So I believe we have nothing left on the agenda, because we had completed everything beforehand, so our next meeting is Thursday, June 29, at 6:30, and the meeting is closed. Thank you.